Good evening, I'd like to call to order the June 11, 2024 meeting of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Richard Gilbert, I'm the chair. To my right, we have Dylan Stella, who's an alternate member but will actually be serving as a regular member tonight. Dennis Crowe, who's a regular member. Bill Pigott, who's a regular member. And Stephen Bischoff, who is their regular member. And then we have our zoning officer Maria Petola at the very end. Four votes are needed for an application to be approved in accordance with state statutes. A simple majority is not sufficient. The zoning officer will read the call of the meeting as advertised on the occasion once we start. After the applications have been read, anyone who wishes to withdraw or postpone his or her application is free to do so. If there is no one who wishes to withdraw, we will then go forward with the applications. You are being issued and advertised. The zoning officer will call the application at which time the applicant or his or her representative will come forward and state his or her name and address for the record and the nature and reason for the appeal. The applicant or representative should stand where he or she can be seen and all displays can be seen by both the board and the audience. Any and all items, plans, pictures shown to the board are considered exhibits and all exhibits must be left for file. After presentation is made by the applicant, we'll entertain questions from members of the board and make questions from the audience. We will also, after that discussion has taken place, accept presentations of statements either in favor of or in opposition to the application. Please be sure to state your name and address the first time that you speak and then your name any subsequent time you speak. When your application has been heard, we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting and the board will go into deliberations with seated members. You're free to stay here as tempting as it may be. You should not make any further comments, even if you think of something you should have said or wish you had said but didn't. That would be taking this testimony and according to statute, you're not permitted to take testimony after the closing of the public portion. In most instances, we will make our decision immediately after the hearing. You may stay here the result or call the land use in the morning. Also, you'll be notified by mail and all decisions will be published in the source. We'll now call on our zoning officer Maria Petola to now read the appeals to be presented to me.
Okay, the legal notice advertised. Legal notice, Madison Zoning Board Appeals, Madison, Connecticut. Notice is hereby given that the board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 11, 2024 at 7:00 p.m. The meeting will be conducted as a hybrid meeting in Room A, Town Campus, State Campus Drive, and remotely as a Zoom online webinar. Attendees may join the webinar through either the webinar link or call in information below. www.zoom.us webinar ID 92002702103, password 388818, or call in 16465588656. Application number 2409105, Circle Beach Road, map 6, lot 27, zone R5. Owner, applicant Barbara Miller, variance request to section 2.17 to allow zero foot setback from the critical coastal resource where 50 feet is required. Previous house was also located at zero feet from critical coastal resource. Application includes coastal site. Application 24-1087 West Wharf Road, map 15, lot 30, zone R4. Owner, applicant Robert J. and Christina S. Zabato, variance request to section 3.8C to allow 3,236 square feet of floor area where 2,480 square feet is required. Application includes coastal site plan. Further details including application materials are posted on the town of Madison website, www.madisonct.org, under the calendar link to this meeting. Questions and or comments can be emailed to the land use office at landuse@madisonct.org up to 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Dated this 21st day of May 2024, Richard Gilbert Chair. This was published twice in Source on May 30th and on June 6th.
Thanks Maria. Before we start, so we're going to, our alternate commissioner Dylan Stella, you've been seated as a regular member this evening, so you'll be taking part in the deliberations. This is only for regular members. So, given that, I'd like to call the representative or applicant for one of five Circle Beach Road, like to present.
Yes. Good evening, I'm Chris McKean, Attorney of the Offices of 900 Chapel Street in Mainland Connecticut. Also living in Madison with everyone in Hatchet Lane. I'm here tonight representing Barbara Miller, who's in the back row here. She's been, she bought this property back in 1978. The property had a structure on it that was storm damaged and ultimately demolished back in 2012. She has been sifting her way through the FEMA requirements, the 50% rule, and lots of other information, trying to figure out the best way to proceed with this property. I submitted today a letter, which is going to be my comments tonight. So, it's really a sort of a roadmap of what I'm going to tell you tonight. I apologize if that's a late file. I have copies of it in case you guys cannot get them, but I'm going to verbally state the information in here, but I can submit copies if you'd like.
What's a letter on the website?
Yes.
Yes, I submitted a letter today, which is exactly what I'm going to go through right now. So, it's not exactly the same as it is today. So, the applicant seeks one variance here. So, from that sense, the application is fairly simple. This lot is entirely comprised of coastal resources and therefore we need a zero foot setback from the coastal resources, which as you know, the requirement is a 50 foot setback. The previous house obviously had a zero foot setback from critical coastal resources and more importantly, that house was situated much closer to the actual significant resources, most significant being the sound itself. It was much closer to the water and also situated almost on the western property line. So, it was nonconforming with respect to the western side yard setback. The former house was located 2.7 feet, to be exact, from the western property line. It also, as I indicated, had a zero foot setback from the critical coastal resources. It was located 20.5 feet from the mean high water line, approximately five feet from coastal jurisdiction line, and approximately two and a half feet from the high tide line. Again, that's the former location. The proposed new house will, if the variance of the 50 foot critical coastal resources setback is granted, the proposed new house will comply with every zoning requirement. Essentially, the house is being put, is chipped this way into the building envelope so that it will comply with all yard requirements, all coverage requirements, all floor area requirements. So, in doing so, we will eliminate the existing or the formerly existing nonconformity of the western side yard. The, as you probably know, but I cite for you here the case law that's an owner of a nonconforming structure such as the one that was here has a constitutionally protected right to maintain and restore a nonconforming structure. That right was solidified most recently in a case called Mayor Whitman, the Connecticut Supreme Court case that I cited in my letter, and a case called Petruzy, which was a 1979 case. And then most recently, the Connecticut General Statute, section 8-2, was revised in 2017 to indicate that the demolition of a home is not indicative of an owner's desire to abandon the nonconforming structure.
May I add, correct me if I'm wrong, the passage of time has to impact. So, even though it's been 12 years, 13, no, more.
Yeah.
But still, let's go home.
You are correct. The passage of time, I looked at that issue today, in fact, I'm going to grab it. The, thinking that may come up. There are cases, and this is from Judge Fuller's Land Use Law and Practice Treatise. There are cases in here that talk about a period where a hotel had been closed from 1966 to 1991 and intent to abandon was not found yet. As I indicated earlier, my client has been sifting her way through that complicated area of FEMA, what you can or can't do relative to 50% of your assessed value. Is that value that the town is using an appropriate value? I mean, these are difficult questions for people that are in the business, not just laypeople. So, there has never been an intent to abandon the home that she had there. And frankly, what this application is doing is proposing a reconstruction of the house rather than a rebuild of a nonconforming structure that is too close to the neighbor and way too close to the water. So, the result is a much better situation environmentally, ecologically, and in terms of the zoning compliance, because it will comply with each and every zoning requirement other than the critical coastal resource requirement or setback requirement, which it just cannot satisfy. The old house couldn't, any house can't. On this site, you can't comply with it. And I think, I did see a letter that was filed today, I think purporting to oppose this application, but I think it had a misunderstanding of what critical coastal resources are. I think it had an understanding that the critical coastal resources are the tideline or the water. And it's much more than that. It is dunes, it is sands, it is rock formations. Their critical coastal resources are defined in our regulations to include all those things, which again permeate the entire site. So, there's no way you can build a structure on this site and comply with the critical coastal resource setback. In fact, the only thing that you can rebuild, absent a variance to put it within the building envelope as we're proposing, is to restore the floor. And for all the reasons that I have set forth in the application, the new location in the new house is better. Not just from a zoning perspective, but from a FEMA perspective, it will be elevated to the FEMA level. It will have a complying state-of-the-art septic system. I know I've been before this board before and I've cited the cases of Adelson, Vine, and Hescock as standing for the proposition that a reduction or elimination of nonconformities can be an independent basis for the board, should it so choose, to grant a variance rather than a finding of a traditional legal hardship, which as we all know is sometimes a difficult standard to satisfy. As I've indicated, we are eliminating the nonconformity of the side yard. Perhaps more importantly, we are mitigating, although not technically reducing, we are mitigating the failure to comply with the critical coastal resource setback because we're moving away from the most critical of those critical resources, and that is the water. I would submit, in addition to the reduction of nonconformities, that this site, because the coastal resources permeate the entire site, satisfies the traditional hardship requirement as well, because other than rebuilding a prior legal nonconforming structure, you can't satisfy the requirement anyhow, anyway, building on this site. I think that's enough. I think that does satisfy the traditional hardship. On top of the compliance with all of the zoning regulations and the FEMA guidelines, allowing a home to be reconstructed within the building envelope is consistent with Madison's coastal resiliency plan back in June 2016, indicating that homeowners ought to be assisted to the extent we can. In fact, that policy calls for an overhaul of regulations to permit people to more easily sift through these FEMA regulations and at the same time waive the zoning constraints on rebuilding, whether it be a voluntary rebuild to avoid a disaster or whether it be a disaster already having occurred and a home being damaged by the storm. In addition to our variance application, we have a coastal site plan application, which Mike Harkin and I spent, as well as with speaking with Maria Petola and Aaron Mannix in town, to submit information to DEEP. And the first concern was about species being potentially impacted. And back in March, we received a letter, which is part of the record, from, I see it up here, Mike, sorry for your exhibit, but from Shannon Kearney from the Wildlife Division of the National Diversity Database at DEEP. And her opening line is that she does not anticipate increased negative impacts to the state-listed species resulting from the proposed activity at the site. That led us to the next phase of preparing the coastal site plan application, which, when filed with the town, gets referred to DEEP. And DEEP has responded, of course, today with their response on that. And I'm going to let Mike Harkin address the comments that we've received to DEEP and the recommendations that they've turned over to you now.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Michael Harkin. I'm a professional engineer and principal of Harkin Engineering located at 78 Wolf Hollow Lane in the town of Killianworth, Connecticut. I'm just going to go over, take one quick step back. As part of the plan package that you guys had and was submitted is the subsurface sewage disposal plan, which is actually the septic plan for this lot. So, that is part of the record, which shows the septic system, the new septic system, being installed the furthest to the north as possible away from the water. That...
Ray has that up on the screen there.
Well, it's not that, no, I don't. I can take it. I just took it down. I don't have the septic plan in my record, but I can bring it up if you'd like to see it on the screen.
If you could zoom in on it, it gives clarity if we can't see from this distance.
Okay.
Otherwise, I got to walk up there and...
I'll bring it over to you. My answer just is that... Do you have it in file?
I have. I can bring it up for her.
Okay, I'll keep going while she pops it up and I'll bring it over if you guys want to see it. So, the initial design of this obviously is all based on septic. That's going to control where the physical structure goes in our redesign. So, again, as you can see, we put the septic system as far north as possible, meeting all the health code requirements. From the septic system itself, then you have the public health code setbacks from a system to a building. And that's where we got the system located and the house located. Just so you know, we did our best to move it the furthest we can for the critical coastal resources, which is the coastal jurisdiction line, mean high water, and the physical aspects of Long Island Sound. We do have an approval, which is part of the packet from the Health Department regarding this plan. And again, that kicked us into the next step, which was the CAM application, which the septic system is shown on this as well. So, if you put it on there. Okay, it's showing in the same location. So, we prepared the CAM application. We had multiple discussions with the town before we did this. This has been going on for about a year now with the project plans. We talked to Maria, we talked to Aaron. The town itself, mainly Aaron, asked us before we submitted the CAM application to touch base, as Chris said, with the natural diversity database with regards to endangered species, plant life and plant matter again. And Chris went through there and, you know, they basically stated that they don't anticipate any impacts from our proposal. After that, we had that letter, we submitted the whole application to Aaron, subsequently sent it up to the DEP. At 2 o'clock today, Maria got the comments and then forwarded to us. I have the comments here, which is basically, my office does three to four CAMs a week. It's pretty much the general what they put out, but he does have recommendations. And when I say he, Jason Hale, was the reviewer for DEP on this one, he had only two recommendations, which are achieved in our plans anyways. The first was to ensure installation and maintenance of appropriate erosion and sediment control measures during the planned period. But as you can see in our plan, we have anti-tracking pad, we have stake hay bales, we have soffence shown on the plans and called out. Those are basically one of the things that have to be implemented and installed. And then we have to call Maria to come out and take a look at it.
She does have the screen.
Want to move that over so you can see it a little bit better?
We, yeah, we can't see.
There you go. Do you want me to point at that? Maybe easier for you?
That would make it much clearer.
Perfect. So, on our plans, we have multiple callouts, we have the anti-tracking pad, the stark cash line is soffence, you can see the stake hay bales in the back of it. All those get implemented before construction starts. Then we call Maria out there to come take a look at them. She gives her blessing and then we can start construction on the site. So... That is during construction. So, his item number one is already taken care of on our plans. He has recommendation number two, to ensure that the structure's elevation, electrical and AC unit meet FEMA and LMOA VE velocity zone 13 local flood management standards. Again, we already achieved that on our plan. It's V13, our finished floor elevation is at 15.50, which meets the FEMA requirement as far as elevation. We have a mechanical platform on the side of the building, which does not go past the building setback line, that's a requirement. And it's at the same elevation, so we meet that for mechanicals. And then we have the propane tanks shown on the plan as well, and those are strapped down and weighted and called out as well. So, we basically meet his two recommendations that he had requested in his review. Now, again, I know Attorney McKean had mentioned, and I just want to restate that the critical coastal resource on this site is the beach sand. It's beach, okay? We've done six or seven houses on Circle Beach Road. This is the first time we've ever actually come in to ZBA based on the beach. So, you're going to be seeing a lot more applications on Circle Beach Road coming in, because virtually everything on Circle Beach Road is beach sand. It's all critical coastal resource, except for the asphalt in the street itself. So, for instance, if we wanted to put a front porch or something on this, if it was already constructed, we would have to come back to you, because everything on Circle Beach now is pretty much a coastal resource, because it's all sand. So, again, just to show everybody on our plan, the old dwelling location, virtually almost right in the water, water lapped underneath it. I believe it was two feet and change from the property line. And what we've done is moved our proposed structure as far back from the water as we can. Again, that's based on the proposed septic area. We've taken the septic, instead of having it on the waterside, we've put it as far landward as we can. And then most importantly, we fit within the parameters of the building setback lines. We meet all the bulk standards, again, as far as building setback. The lot coverage, floor area. The stairs for this, I just want to make note, is underneath. A lot of people ask, because we're pretty close to the building setback line, so be accessing through stairs underneath. Now, with that being said, that ends my portion of the presentation. If Attorney McKean wants to wrap up, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have with the site plan or...
Parking underneath?
Parking, not really underneath. I mean, they have the driveway. They may be able to get a car in here, but I think this is going to be like the other houses, gray beam on piers, because it's elevated. If you have a set of piers here, again, you're only going to get one or two cars in the front lot. Yes, sir.
On the coastal site plan that we just got today. The analysis section, summary and recommendations. I wonder if you could read that or just summarize that.
I just went through the recommendations. You want me to go through the analysis?
Well, it says, "Based on the information provided, further evaluation is necessary to ensure the safety and protection of life and property." And then it goes on to say, the home, it needs to be carefully reviewed to ensure it complies with FEMA standards. In other words, and if you read further, I kind of get the impression that they still have some questions about this. And if you look at these charts here, they say, "Issues of concern, potential risks to life and property in the coastal area, checked. Proximity of disturbance to sensitive resources, checked. Potential to cause erosion, checked. Water quality and stormwater impact, checked." These are all issues that they pointed out.
Yes, sir.
And your comment, I guess.
Yeah, absolutely. We do so many CAMs a week, that is standard cookie cutter language that they put into the documents. Every single house on the street and every single dwelling has the same potential of what they just listed, and they're all pre-existing. Every existing resident, even this neighbor that lives in this house, they can check the same box too. It's just a standard check on that. They go through to discuss the building itself to make sure that it meets FEMA requirements. Our plan 100% meets FEMA requirements. That's why our client hired a professional engineer to design it to meet FEMA requirements. If you go on additionally, he goes on to talk about the increased density in a flood-prone area. That's true. We are increasing the density, because we're putting a house back where a house previously existed. Right now, there's no house. If you put anything there, we're increasing that. So, we go through these and we see these a lot. I see all these in probably three other applications last week. Comments, there was another item. They talked about it, the parcels inhabit areas of critical species as identified by the biologically database, okay? We went above him to the natural diversity database. So, the reviewer just looks at general concerns as a whole for the area. We've gone further and implemented our plans, engineering designs to FEMA, as well as going in and looking at the critical coastal resources via a department that's actually ahead of them. That's what they specialize. So, you know, his summary goes through and lists those things, but then his recommendations are just those two minor items, which we've already taken care of in our plans. So, you know, not to diminish any of his analysis, he's basically putting down what's required in his job to identify the potential aspects which can happen on this. And then if they were so egregious, he would put further recommendations that are more detailed in it. And he didn't do that. These are the... And he didn't do that, th- these are the standard ones. And, you know, not to lead into another application, but you see the standard ones when we we go to the next one. So, um, really not major concerns from an engineering standpoint.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Thank you.
So Maria, can I ask a question for zoning or either you, so you're. Front of the old house is here and you're you're moving. You're moving it north and it looks like east, well, why? I don't.
Well, because if if they're going to put something back, we prefer to be more compliant.
No, I understand that, but why if the old house was zero feet from the coastal resource and the new one is zero feet? Why, why is the variance, I guess I'm, that's confusing, why the variance?
Because they're putting, go ahead.
I, I, I had the same.
The same question.
I have the same confusion, and I I can share with you that I have colleagues, land use attorneys doing work in Madison, asking the same thing. Yeah, um, I think the answer is because we have a zero foot setback requirement in the house. That either is existing or in this case formally existing. But we're we're building a house in a different area with a different zero setback. So it's it's similar to the situation where you have a structure in the in the side yard setback, for instance. And you're putting a layer on top of it that also is in the side yard setback. Certain towns and cities, you don't need to come and get a variance for that. Or you can do it by special exception, if you do a little step back and our our our. Our our history has been to put these in front of the the ZBA. Because it is a different kind of zero coastal resource setback than what just simply replacing the prior structure is. That's the best explanation that I can come up with.
So, so I was thinking that perhaps by moving the house, you lose your grandfathering of all those setbacks. But you still want one of the setbacks. And so that's what you're requesting.
And and in a different way, in a different location.
Yes.
Yeah. But but you're correct, you you, if you're not gonna rebuild your non-conforming structure, you build something else. You do lose the the non-conforming structure step, the legal non-conforming structure step, yes.
And to be clear, it wouldn't be possible to construct a damn new house in a different location without a variance.
That is my position, I don't believe it. Again, other than reconstructing the one that was demolished. You cannot build a home in the building envelope on this site and comply with the fifty foot coastal setback. Can't be done. Any other points? I I I read through my letter, I kinda hit the ones I I had put in my letter. I'm happy to answer questions from the board or from anybody in the audience or the public.
As long as so the boards, anybody? Have any other further? I'll take that next one. And Maria, we, just to state the obvious, we've gone over this a thousand times, but just to state it, if if they. Wanted to rebuild in that exact footprint where the old house was, they wouldn't be here then.
They could build in kind.
Right, okay.
Exactly in kind.
Exactly in kind.
Oh, with Mike Corkin has a comment.
I'm sorry.
Mike, Mike has a comment.
Oh, yes.
They can, we can build exactly in kind, but the caveat is we have to meet FEMA flood requirements and then elevate the structure. Up to the same elevation that we're elevating up to. It's a FEMA requirement.
Yeah, that that does remind me of another point that um I was discussing earlier, and that is. The the location of, this one doesn't show the the prior home, this one does. But the location of the of the prior home raised. I think i- is an offense to the surrounding neighbors. You know, it's out closer to the water, it's gonna stick out more. I I, to me, that is clearly less preferable than moving it back and putting it in the in the designated building envelope and raising.
So your lot coverage is less than, right? I mean, looking at the chart here, maximum lot coverage.
Maximum lot coverage required in that zone or allowed in that zone is one thousand seven forty-four. We're proposing to be at one thousand six hundred, so we're less than the regulations, but the previous house was one thousand one hundred and eight.
Yeah.
So the the previous house by the water. Was a bit smaller than what we're proposing, but we're still under the max lot coverage allowed for the one.
Probably should bring up the uh. The application, ZB, it's on.
Yep, ZBA or the coastal ZBA.
Yeah, ZBA. You probably ought to just step through the numbers on that. Just.
Sure.
Please hold.
You're talking about page two probably, correct?
Yeah. So the only variance is two seventeen.
Page three.
Okay, the most numbers here.
I think if you go to the next page, you've got the table.
The zoning table.
Yeah, that really clar- clarifies it.
Yeah, I think, I think the the attachment.
Yeah, yes. It's the attachment.
Unless we told it out, made it a separate.
It's a different file.
It's a different file.
Yeah.
Or you could just put up my site plan, it's right on the site plan.
Yeah.
Every time.
Yeah, off to the right side. Should be over here.
Is it?
Yep, right there, you see it.
Oh, I'm not over enough, hold on.
There you go. Off to the right.
And now we're coming up.
So you've got. So you've got. Lot areas. Building area is. Setbacks. Name here, keep back from them. Max lot coverage. You've got about sixteen hundred. Who's required, max is seventeen thirty thousand. Thirty-one fifty were, thirty-two forty is max. Oh, I think the uh.
Any questions from the audience about the application? Anyone who'd like to speak? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
My name is Stephen Lee, sixty-three, Crab Apple Lane in Guilford. And I have two questions slash comments about the proposed building on the site. First, that is predicated on the understanding that the house was destroyed previously by the storms in two thousand eleven. That was not the case. The best of my recollection, the houses were unlivable through neglect for at least fifteen years before that. So we're not talking about something that was damaged by storms and is therefore in the window of coastal rebuilding. Secondly, we're talking about doubling the size of the existing structure. And that seems to be a lot for a rebuilding of a previous structure instead of a whole application process.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to speak for or against the application?
Hi, my name is Eric Peterson, and I live at twelve Circle Beach uh Road in Madison. And uh, we've been here, my wife and I, uh, since nineteen eighty and lived in different neighborhoods. But we find Circle Beach a very special place, and we've been there thirteen, fourteen years now. And have watched our neighbors uh along the beach um raise, lift their houses, repair their seawalls. Um, you know, we were there when they demolished the house. And uh, well, from, I don't know the applicant, but uh, it would be nice to have a home there. Seen families moving in and uh, I just feel that from a. Sorry, a self-serving purpose, I uh kinda watched my land assessments go up. We talked about, it's a lot of sand down there, uh, which is dangerous, but um. We're, our assessments have gone up significantly, but we enjoy it and uh. Um, I don't want to see our house if it gets destroyed in a storm or something. Uh, for us to have to encounter, uh, because it is not conforming. Some of the rebuilding issues that this owner seems to have been going through the last few years. And I totally support uh what they're trying to do and hope that uh you'll approve uh the building plan that's been proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak for or against? Oh, yeah.
Person online.
Sorry, I forgot. Video. So Mr. Bill Lee, I guess?
Mr. Lee, if you could state your name.
Uh, Bill Lee, can you see me okay?
We can hear you, so state your name and address, please.
Uh, William Leet, and I am, uh, my residence is thirteen Indian Way in Falmouth, Maine. But I also am one of the owners of the property uh known as Y'all Come, which is adjacent to the the lot uh owned by Ms. Milner.
Go ahead, do you have a comment?
Should I proceed?
Yes, good.
So, so everybody is sympathetic to somebody who's house has to be torn down at some point. And that's why the law permits them to reconstruct in the same footprint. Um, I do think, um, and I know that buildings is a complicated decision, but I do think. It is important to give this a little bit of context, which is that uh we have a property that, um, well, by way of example. Uh, the property was purchased in nineteen seventy-eight, I've been going there all my life, and I'm sixty-six. And I think I've met Ms. Milner once. Um, the property was uh deteriorated and deteriorated to the point where. The first selectman wrote a letter in twenty thousand, in twenty eleven saying, you know, it's becoming a a significant problem. I included that letter in a submission earlier today. And then it's not surprising, given the condition it was in at that point, that uh it didn't fare well when Irene came around. Uh, but in any event, um. You know, it it was, uh, I believe condemned and then demolished, I could be incorrect on the condemnation, but I seem to recall seeing a sign up there. So it was condemned and demolished, and then um. From our standpoint, nothing's happened since twenty twelve, other than it's been, the lot has been for sale from time to time. For quite a while, and here we are twelve years later. And instead of an effort to sort of uh rebuild something that existed there before, uh possibly on a different location. Uh, we have what is a substantially larger house and I, and and. If in looking at the plans, uh, the the location of the old house is sketched in, but we don't have any dimensions, but I can tell you it was. Quite small, it was, I believe it was two bedrooms, it actually used to, was a garage originally that was attached to another house that was moved. And the garage was left there and the former owner uh built it out, so it was, it could be lived in. Um, so in any event, it was, it was quite small, one story, uh, maybe it was elevated a little bit. But in any event, so now, after uh, you know, a long time of not much happening and then it being torn down. Here we are and uh there is an effort to rebuild a much larger house that occupies a lot more of a lot than the other one did. And it's interesting, so uh council has educated me a little bit on the the definition of the critical coastal resource. By pointing out that it doesn't, it isn't limited to the high tide line, it's also includes uh the sand and the and the rocks and. All those sort of things, and I think, I think the response I would have is, well, then those are, since they're, they are all individually identified in the ordinance, and I went back to look at them. They're all worthy of protection and he's, it appears what's being asked for is sort of a blanket override of of all of those, so. It's, it's, yeah, I I understand he's saying it's built in a sandlot, so he needs some kind of variance from that. But um, he's uh, it's not being built fifty feet from the water, it's not being built fifty feet from the rocks. Um, I mean, uh, there, it's, it's just sort of uh trying to override all those, so. I guess fundamentally, I just have um a little bit of concern with, you know, uh, when you have. Sort of the fact pattern that we have here where nothing happens for a really long time. And then instead of an effort, you know, uh, you know, after twelve years to try to rebuild something that's comparable to the to the original footprint, we have. What appears to be quite a larger, quite a bit larger house uh on the lot and all that comes with, so. I'm not opposed to reconstruction, but um it just seems to me that, uh, given the fact pattern, it is. Uh, reasonable to ask that it be, uh, that what, but is being requested is something that more closely approximates uh what was originally there.
Thank you. Anybody else, um, or?
Yep.
Presenting.
Yep. Amy.
Go ahead, Amy.
You can unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm nowhere nearly as articulate as Bill. But I'm the neighbor, I'm I'm representative of the neighbors on the other side, and I.
Could you, give us your name and address, please?
Amy Connolly, um, and we own the cottage, one oh three Circle Beach, um, on the west side of the said property.
Thank you.
Okay, and I concur with Bill's statement that the house has been neglected, was neglected. It really did not get demolished due to the storm. Um, and I think that what they're proposing to rebuild is unreasonable in light of. The failed selling of the property, like I said, I'm nowhere near as articulate as Bill, but I concur with everything he said.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any else in the audience?
No.
Other questions for the board? Actually, I have one other question and real, sorry, I hate to keep putting you in the spot. Since the um proposed house is moving. I I realize the, like, the lot area and the buildable area are the same, would they not require variances? Because it's a different footprint or my mistake?
No, it complies, they made it comply, I think. Uh, what do you? What is, I don't know, what are you looking?
Area seven. Thousand.
Looking at the zoning table?
Yeah, yeah, just the first two, the lot area and buildable area.
So the required lot area is seven thousand and they have more than what's required.
Oh, required, okay.
That's the minimum lot size that is needed for that zone and they have more.
The required and allowed sometimes is.
Okay.
Let's read. Any third question? Anybody? Any? Final. I, I. I I I guess I'd like to briefly respond to to the to the neighbors and um. I I I understand uh people. With changes is never easy, um, but to some degree, they've had the benefit of having a vacant land, the vacant land next to them. I I represented to this board that Ms. Milner has made repeated trips, she's pointed to the assessor's office. Coming in each year, trying to figure out how much money she could spend to repair this house structure that she had. And we, i- if we. And we, i- if we misstated that the house was demolished by the storm, it, it was demolished because of damages sustained during the storm. It was demolished after the storm, just to be clear. But more, more to the point, that the rebuilding of the existing or former home at FEMA level has to be more offensive to the neighbor on that side than a home repositioned. It, it will not be something that that neighbor would want to have rebuilt. I, I don't think they're appreciating that. And as far as it being a bigger house, well, they're spending considerable money to move, raise, install an engineered septic system. And everything that they've proposed is within the limits of the zoning regulations. So they're not, they're not asking you for something they're not entitled to already under the zoning regulations in terms of the relief. So I just didn't want it to be characterized that, that they're overreaching. They're, they're only asking for what the regulations already allow.
Yeah, I'm glad you pointed that out because when I was listening to them, I couldn't figure out what they meant by bigger, I mean, and, uh, I'm glad you clarified that.
Richard, we do have another, a hand raised before you close the public?
Okay. Sure. I'm sorry, sir, we came, you, did you have anything else?
Not, not at this time.
Okay. We'll go to that. Audience then, please.
Thank you. I did, I just wanted to point that the house had been neglected.
Your name, your address?
My, my name is Russell Leed. Uh, I live in Montpelier, Vermont. Uh, I'm again in a, uh, a member of the family that owns Y'all Come, the next door neighbor. And the, the house was, uh, neglected for many years. Pigeons were living on the front porch for several years before the house met its demise. One concern I had from looking at the overall plan, is this going to be a household that's lived in year round? Uh, is it going to be winterized so that people can live there over the, the winter season? Or is this just going to be a summer vacation residence? That, that's all I had to contribute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other final comments? All right, I'd like to motion to close the public portion of the hearing and move on to deliberations.
So, so move to what I'm asking.
Yes.
How, how will we say it?
All in favor? Aye. Steve, you want to start?
Oh, I'll start. I appreciate everybody's comments and everything, but it's, everybody in town in Madison has the right to rebuild. Basically, the life that they own, the, the infrastructure is running in all different ways. And so you've got the hardship with the zero foot setback, the setback. It was perfect after two weeks.
I have to agree with Steve there. I think the, uh, the building they're proposing is a lot better than the previous structure in terms of like reducing some of the various non-conformities. And I do think the legal definition of a hardship, uh, is met in multiple ways. The, the pertaining, the non-conformity of the structure and also the fact that the entire, basically, the entire property is a critical coastal, um, resource. And you can't really build a structure without requiring a variance. I'm also not reconstructing the previous, like, worst structure. Um, but I will say, um, it is definitely important that the house is constructed according to the plan, according to all the, um, I mentioned during the testimony I brought today. And that should emphasize, emphasize in like, um, our rule.
I do emphasize with the folks who say, well, this is, you know, a change to, uh, what's there, but zoning requirements are what they are and they can build on that land regardless of what it was caused the house to be demolished, uh, whether it was a storm or it was just lack of maintenance or anything else, it doesn't matter, nor does the passage of time. Which I did, as I, uh, carry the town. Uh, those things do not give us the right to say, well, you can't use your land. Okay, that, they still own the land, they still, you know, can build within the zoning requirements. It do require variance, the zero foot setback for the, for the resource. But every house on that prop, on that road would apparently have that same restriction. And I would think that because there is nothing on the property anywhere that does not violate that requirement, you couldn't put a worker's toolbox there, uh, say, without it being a violation. So I, I don't see the, the objections as, you know, sustainable um, against those items. Uh, I think that they've done their homework and found ways to meet the other zoning requirements. So. Okay. I have no more.
Bill?
I think I would be in favor. They eliminated the, of the non-conformity on the western side setback. And they are entitled to, uh, to rebuild in the same footprint or the existing footprint of the demolished structure. And that's a right that they have. So I would be in favor.
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna add, you mentioned there was one reduction in the setback. There, there was a lot of, I just want to get on the record, um, there were several people talking about, um, size and whatnot. The house is conforming, so although we're supposed to consider the whole project as a whole, there's nothing, you can't tell someone their house is too big if it, it's into, if it meets all the zoning regs, so. And, and the third thing, the final thing I'd like to point out too is if, if this is denied and they want to rebuild, it's, you're gonna have a structure that's closer to one neighbor and closer to the water, which I think would not be an improvement. I think this is an improvement. It's well thought out and I think the fact that it's in a coastal, the whole thing's in a coastal setback. Now, this is a hardship and we have one reduction in the form, so I'd be in favor. Um, if they have any other thoughts before we do a motion? So. I'll go ahead and make a motion. Sure, so I'd like to make a motion and to approve, uh, application twenty-four oh nine, one oh five, Circle Beach Road to allow. So I'll start over. I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve application twenty-four oh nine, one oh five, Circle Beach Road to grant a variance to section two point one seven to allow zero foot setback from the coastal resources. And justification is the uh, reduction besides setback and the hardship that the entire lot is living in coastal resource. And it's like to also state that the variance is based on the plans as submitted and that all construction must conform to those plans. And that we also find the coastal site plan is, that's a separate variance. Yeah, right, we do too, okay. So could I get a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Um, I'd like to put a motion that the, we find that the coastal cycling is consistent with the goals and policies of the Coastal Management Act. And we approve the coastal site plan for application twenty-four oh nine, one oh five, Circle Beach Road.
Let, let me have a little discussion before we-
Oh, sure.
We, we just forgot a second, we need to move on. I'll second it if we can do a little discussion.
Sure.
I'll second the motion. I just want to discuss, I just want to discuss the points that Bill made with the letter that came in about the, uh, concerns and the, uh, the prop, risk of property life and so on. I, I find it, um, let me say exasperating that the state would come in and say, these are concerns, these are concerns. We recommend that you do something that has nothing to do with the concern. Why would the state do that? I, I, I find that exasperating to, to deal with that. I don't think we have any actionable areas that, the land has been used in that area for a long time. And if there were some issue with risk of life and so on, and, and they came in and told us it was something serious, they would have, you know, they would have, they would be obligated to come in and explain that to us. That's not, not a, an acceptable form to state a concern and then give us recommendations that are pabbling. But I, I just thought we have to, um, at least discuss that and acknowledge it.
Yeah, I agree. It surprised me when I saw that letter today. It came in at five o'clock. Or at least that's when I went out.
That's what we saw.
And when I read that, I said, what's going on?
Yeah, and then the-
It just didn't make sense.
Yeah.
And, uh, so I don't know Dennis said there's a problem with the state or with this guy that brought this up. I don't know, Bill, but it should be clarified.
It should, it should be and it isn't. And so I don't think we, you know, they, they gave us recommendations that the recommendations have been complied with. And I, I don't find it, um, obligatory upon us to go around and, you know, raise issues with something that they just express concerns about. I, it's not, you know, if they have something to say and they don't give us evidence, then we can't, we can't stop somebody being-
So, what's that? I'm ready to second the motion. We already got a second. Yeah, I don't have anyone.
I'm just, I'm just questioning.
Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I do agree. It is kind of confusing, especially in this context, so I can see where you're coming from there. That's it.
Okay. All in favor?
Uh, the motion?
Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. I'd like to motion open the public portion of the, so move. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Detective Sector, please sit up.
So I'd like to, um-
Just a second, because a lot of, we gotta change a room.
I'd like to invite the applicant. I'm here for application number ten eighty-seven West Worth Road. So, please present.
Hi, good evening. Uh, Chris McKean. Office address is nine hundred Chapel Street, Union, Connecticut. Is I here in Madison at thirty-one Hoshkus Lane. Uh, I represent, uh, Robert and Christine that is, uh, sitting right here in the first row. They are the owners of eighty-seven West Worth Road, Madison, Connecticut. Similar to, um, the prior application I submitted today, basically an outline of what my presentation would be. I have extra copies, uh, in case they didn't work their way to you. This application is similar to, uh, several other applications I've, uh, presented to the board. Here we have a site that is, um, non-conforming as to lot area in that it contains only seventy-five, hundred and seventy-six square feet, with ten thousand is required. The lot is also a corner lot. And for zoning purposes, it has two front yards and two rear yards, which that means two thirty-foot setbacks and two twenty-foot setbacks. It's easier to say that, um, without appreciating how much building envelope that takes away. It does take away a lot. Uh, on top of that, the site is located in the eighty thirteen flood zone, like many of the sites close to the water, but this is also in the limo, limited wave action zone, which is, does not affect all of the properties, um, in, in the beach area, but uh, presents yet another challenge for construction. The existing site is improved with a home and a detached garage. It is, it is, I'm sure you're all familiar with the location. It's a fairly prominent location as you're heading down toward the Madison Beach Hotel at the intersection of, of West Worth and, and Middle Beach. It's to your left as you're heading toward the water, on the water side. The two structures on the site are non-conforming in six different ways. The first being a front yard setback. The existing garage is only fifteen point eight feet from the property boundary. Again, thirty feet is required there. Uh, the rear yard setback, um, the, the garage is located only seven point seven feet from the property boundary. Twenty feet required there. The, uh, existing house is located eighteen point six feet from the western boundary. Thirty feet is required there. Uh, the front yard setback for the, for the, uh, open porch, the existing porch is thirteen feet from the property boundary. There's certain, where twenty feet is required, again, as a rear yard, um, applicable. The building coverage, the existing house has a detached garage, uh, or, excuse me, the house and the detached garage have a building coverage thirteen hundred and twenty-nine square feet, where only twelve hundred and eighty-eight is permitted. And the last being the fact that the detached garage is where it is because it is a front yard. It is an accessory building in a front yard, which is prohibited by section eleven point one of our regulations. The applicants propose to reconstruct a home, um, with a garage underneath that will, uh, eliminate all six of those non-conformities. And in doing so, they need one variance, and that is as to floor area. Now, you look at the floor area variance we're requesting and you see a seven hundred and fifty-six square foot number, and that might jump off the page at you a little bit. But I recall being in front of this board with a property on Oak Avenue down, uh, off of Neck Road. And it's, it's a theme that is coming through, frankly, all of the folks who are trying to raise their homes to comply with FEMA that I've met with, many of whom I steer away from here, telling them that they're asking for too much or I don't think they're gonna get it. But in, in the Oak Avenue situation and in this situation, because you're raising to, to FEMA levels, you have an area beneath the lowered level of the, the area below the first floor, which in some respects becomes basement instead of cellar under our regulations. And the significant difference there is that you have to count basement toward gross floor area. The other factor here is that because we're trying to get rid of a detached garage, which violates the zoning regs in any number of respects, put it underneath. Because you have, you enclose the sides of the garage, it becomes countable to floor area. So, so the number of increase is really deceiving in terms of what the increase is. But with that one increase, uh, excuse me, variance, the new home will be completely- the new home will be completely compliant with all of the setbacks. And I think it's very important for the building envelope to be observed on a property corner like that. And I think the surrounding community will appreciate that much more than they can even realize right now. So, to summarize, the, the newly reconstructed home will be much more compliant with the Madison zoning regulations, it will comply with FEMA, and it will have a new compliant state-of-the-art septic system. This, uh, application is similar in some respects to the prior application in that we have a non, non-conforming structures. Um, with that come the rights to rebuild those in place. And similar to the last, uh, application, what we're suggesting is the proposed reconstruction of this house is way better than rebuilding the existing house and the existing detached garage where they're located. Six different non-conformities to take care of. I can't remember an application that I presented to this board where that many non-conformities were being taken away. At least in the ones that, that I've been in front of, of you. Again, uh, the, the case law relative to, to eliminating non-conformities, uh, is set forth in my letter. Those are the three main cases are Adolfson, Vine, and Heskock. Um, and of course, the Mayor Whitman case, the theory being, and this quote from the Mayor Whitman case to me sums it up. That the reduction of a non-conforming use to a less offensive prohibited use may constitute an independent ground for granting a variance. So what that's really saying is that if we can get rid of a bunch of non-conformities and end up with one minor one, it's a, it's a situation that a zoning board of appeals is justified in granting of variance if it chooses to exercise this discretion to do so. I believe that in addition to the reduction of non-conformities argument, the, uh, site is unique and does satisfy the traditional hardship requirement as well. Um, I live down in the, in the beach area, and I know there are a lot of corner lots. But I don't know that there's a lot of corner lots that are, that, that are in the limo zone um, and have the construction issues that are, that people in the limo zone face. I know, I, I was before this board on the garage that was built on Middle Beach that had to be built, you know, with, uh, built according to the building code to withstand, uh, wave action. And, you know, it, it's expensive, but I, I can't really think of a property corner uh, with a small size lot. I, I think I know of some that are, are, are lots that are comply in terms of lot area, but not a small lot on a corner with two front yard and two rear yard setbacks in the flood and in the limo zone. Just don't know that there's that many. Uh, and again, the challenges that that presents to somebody, whether they're rebuilding non-conforming structures or reconstructing a complying home are significant. The rebuilding of the home to comply with FEMA and also to comply with the Madison regulations, given the requested variance is consistent with the, the June twenty sixteen coastal resiliency plan. And, uh, in addition to our variance application, again, it is seeking only the gross floor area, um, variance. Uh, we've also filed a coastal site plan application. Um, Mike Harkin from Harkin Engineering will discuss that. In that application, uh, he indicates, uh, that the proposed project will meet or exceed FEMA requirements. The nearest coastal resource is the beach, which is a hundred and seven feet from the southern boundary of the parcel. And there will be a reduction in impervious area on, uh, the new proposed site, uh, reducing stormwater runoff. Therefore, there, there's no adverse impact on coastal resources or water-dependent uses. And the proposed plan is consistent with the policies and standards of the Coastal Area Management Act. Uh, with that, I'd like to turn it over to, who's going first, Mike or Travis? Turn it over to, to Mike Harkin, and he can go through the, the coastal site plan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Michael Harkin. I'm a professional engineer and principal of Harkin Engineering located at seventy-eight Wolf Hollow Lane in the town of Killianworth, uh, Connecticut. Again, here tonight on behalf of my client, um, just going to go through the process, um, of how we designed this lot again. Everything starts with septic on this area of town. So we do have a septic plan in front of you. Um, it is, has been approved, as you can see, by the health department. Um, or you don't have to put that up. I'll go right to the coastal site. If you can put it on the screen, I'll talk to the screen to make it easier on everybody.
My old eyes.
I'm closer than you. I still have to use my gold ass. And I'll keep going, and she puts it up there. So, again, this is our coastal site plan. You can see, uh, obviously, we went out and we had the property survey, A two T two survey by Stevenson Associates located in Madison, Connecticut. Um, as you can see here, here's Middle Beach Road West, here's West Fourth Road. Um, what we're proposing is the four-bedroom house with no foundation drains in this area. Obviously, it'll be elevated again to meet the FEMA requirements for that zone. Um, for around seven and a half going around the house, it has to come up to elevation fifteen to meet FEMA. Um, as Attorney McKeon said, then we'll have a garage space underneath. The garage, uh, entrance will be located off West Fourth Road. You can see, pull in and pull under. Um, the house itself, Travis Gulick, um, Gulick and Company is here tonight to go over the architectural plans after I present. So you can physically see what the proposed structure looks like. But again, the septic is located in the side yard or the front yard, however you're looking at the building. Uh, there will be a small retaining wall, about eighteen inches to two feet around there. That's just to play the fill-in place for the septic system. Uh, the utilities will virtually come from here, from an existing telephone pole tying into the back of the house. Gas will come in off West Fourth Road, and then we have an existing water service that will tie in and bring it around. So all the, uh, utilities will not be unsightly from the visual representation of the roadway itself. Um, again, same thing on all of our plans, the standard erosion controls, we have the construction entrance. We do have sill fence going around there. We have areas called out for, uh, state hay bales if we need to. Uh, we have an erosion control note that they have to be in place. Um, again, then we call the planning and zoning enforcement officer to come out and take a look, and then the project gets built out. Um, again, Attorney McKeon had, uh, uh, hit on the drainage calculations for the site. Town of Madison requires drainage counts. Um, we went through the process, but the amount of impervious area that exists now is actually larger than what's going to be built out there. So we're actually reducing the amount of stormwater runoff, and there actually is no need to put underground galleys or things like that in place, um, over there. Again, we did get a letter from DEP for the CAM application. I think this one came in at two thirty today. Somewhere in there. Again, you know, standard summary and recommendations, his analysis, you go through it, it's similar to the last one. But then he goes down to comments, if the variance is granted, the applicant should be aware that the following issues should be addressed. Ensure installation and maintenance of appropriate soil erosion and sediment control measures during the plan period. Again, similar to what they always put in their letters. Um, ensure the structure's elevation, electrical and AC, FEMA and limo are in the AE zone, AE thirteen zone and local flood management standards are adhered to. Again, um, our plan does take care of all that, I should say our plans. Ensure that the structure's elevation, oh, excuse me, uh, free. Ensure that the outdoor shower water supply comes from above, and the outdoor shower features a minimalist design comprising so, uh, solely a shower head extended from the wall. Um, that's virtually generally what happens. It does get suspended and the water does drop instead of coming out sideways through the wall. Number four, ensure that the surrounding enclosure, the shower has breakaway walls or lattice as part of the building code and FEMA requirements. It has to be. Um, and it is not, uh, it is not noted on the plans that the lower walls are either lattice or breakaway walls. If they are breakaway walls, they need to be certified by an engineer or flood vents must be added. This should be designed for a VE fourteen flood zone, which they will. When they physically break down the building and do the structural design, it has to meet FEMA requirements, else the building department's not going to, uh, issue a permit for it. And in that analysis by the structural engineer for the building, it will be rated to be to the exact, uh, I think he said fourteen. Be fourteen flood zone because it is a limo, and that structural engineer will design a structural. With that being said, that ends my presentation, um, with the site again after Travis goes and, uh, does his presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Bring up a second. Thank you. Uh, Travis Gulick, Gulick and Company, uh, design build firm, Madison, forty-five Wall Street. We were contacted by Bob and Christina, um, to try to figure out what to do with this house. Um, it's a, you know, it's a cute little cottage, um, right on the grounds. Um, it's very small rooms. We kind of went back and forth. Um, as you, you know, commission knows that we, we love to raise and renovate, you know, add these type of houses. You know, we go in these, that's our first, our first thought. However, when we started going back through everything, raising, renovated, moving back, septic, all that aspect, it just doesn't make it financially possible. And so when we started looking at a new construction house, we really wanted to make this conform. Obviously, um, what Attorney McKeon said was that it's a small lot. Um, it's under that ten thousand square feet, so we only had certain amount of, uh, square footage to go. We have the front, two front yards, thirty feet and thirty feet, and then the back rear yards, twenty feet, twenty feet. The, um, with the, uh, front, front yard setback, there is an open porch setback. So we have twenty feet for a front porch, which means just the front porch, no living space above it on both sides as well. So we were going to take advantage of that as much as possible. Um, so over here, this, so this was the driveway. We moved it over on this side. When you pull in, this is actually a covered area. The garage starts within the building setback because, again, the garage that we took down or we planned to take down is actually counts as floor area. And so it has to be within the building setbacks. So the garage is under here. We have a covered front porch, stairs going up the front. This, um, no, on the north side, this is actually just a deck. Um, we do have our utilities, the generator and the condenser, just within the building setback as well, because that's a requirement. Um, we're able to meet just all the setbacks that we need to, and then we have stairs that come down within the, the front porch. Um, we had to be this far away from the front porch, uh, setback line due to the septic system that we have going on as well. Um, so as you could see, really tight lot, try to fit a lot in. You could scroll down. Just kind of giving you a baseline of, this is the basement, um, the, pretty much the lower level, we call it. It's really not a basement. When you ever think basement that's underground, this is the lower level. This is at grade. So this is the driveway. These are two garage doors. Again, this is going to be the building setback right in front of this. This is the covered porch, front porch. Um, a couple of garage doors coming in. We have inside, this would all be, um, closed in. This area right here, coming around. So this is the stairs that go up for the inside, inside the garage. And then we have a little back area, some outdoor shower. This wouldn't be enclosed. And just to explain the shadow or shaded area versus the non-shaded area, this a hundred and twelve square feet and the sta- uh, stair enclosure, and in this area right here, this ninety square feet, that I'm not asking for variance on floor area. That already is included in my coverage and floor area. This is the shaded. That way we can close in the actual lower one. Um, go to the second floor. Second floor, come up the stairs. This is again your front covered porch, have a nice little entrance, stairs upstairs. Really modest, small little house. We have a living room, kitchen, little laundry room. This is giving you utility room as well. Powder room, and then we have a back deck going out to the side porch, um, some windows, and that sort of thing. Go to the next one. Second floor, we have a stairway coming up, four-bedroom house, four-bedroom, new septic system. Uh, it's two, uh, two full baths up here, one for the hall, one from the primary. And then out here, this is going to be a, um, a roof deck. So it's the roof of the open porch down below, uh, that's just right through the primary. Um, and then on the third floor, we actually just have a little ladder. Doesn't count as floor area because it's really just an attic. Attic space is just a little ladder. You got to get up to that space. Uh, this is the elevation, front elevation. Um, you see on this side, this is where we're going to be stepping up for the septic. This line right here, that's at grade in that, um, West Worth, um, elevation. We have garage doors be, beyond because this is West Worth. This is where the, this is where the new front of the house is. Um, not Middle Beach, nope. Uh, and the address is eighty-seven. Uh, this side, this is north on this side. Um, so we have the garage doors, comes in here. This is all at grade again. We have, obviously, we have pillars, we have the stairs going up. Nice little tower, kind of keeping it really kind of beachy and kind of keeping it in tune with the rest of the, um, the neighborhood. This is the north side. This is the middle beach side. Um, so this is that deck. This is that stone wall that we have coming here. Again, that's where the septic system is going to be, um, underneath there. Uh, this right in here, that's going to be the utilities. Pretty basics, nothing. This is, this is the front porch, covered area, the front, the, um, again, covered area, the front porch, it counts as half of coverage. So instead of putting that into the house where we're wanting more, we actually have an outdoor space that counts as half coverage. Uh, this is the back. This is east side. We have a couple of double doors right out to a bat, you know, right out to the lawn, um, outdoor shower underneath. This is all open. This is where the deck is, again, the raised area. This is actually going to gradually grade down. So it's actually from the front. Um, I'll go, I'll show you again in the front, but and then this is the south side. Um, again, this looks like lattice. These are going to be enclosed walls, um, not, not lattice. Um, they would be like, um, the CAM application says, breakaway walls, everything FEMA compliant. Uh, Mohawk flood zones, again, everything will be structural engineer drawn. You just go to the front real quick, or the, the first page, Maria, please, site plan. I'll just show you the grade. This is, this is all existing grade here. This is existing grade, and then it'll slope up to the septic area um, as well. So this is all just staying at grade. Um, so really, in the end, the big thing is the floor area. We designed this house where the only variance is just enclosing underneath in the garage. Um, that way they can turn people going to it more is that really security, keeping the garage doors closed. And, you know, having, having their beach stuff all locked up and not having less. So, and so my, is everything? Any other questions?
I mean, can one of you forward the numbers on the, around the application?
You've got them readily worked.
Zoning table?
Yeah. Bring it up on the, yeah.
The application you want?
Or, or if you've got.
Or the table. Oh, actually, go to, you could go to my second page. I have a twelve through one line on mine. It's on mine, so. There we go.
Zoom in on that, please.
Trying, getting there.
So required allowed. Um, do you mind if you allow me to stop through?
Yeah, you can do.
Um, coverage, twelve eighty-eight, that's where you're allowed. Um, the existing is thirteen twenty-nine. We're actually bringing it down to twelve thirteen. So we're, um, we're complying. Floor area, max allowed twenty-four eighty. Right now, that does not include the garage at eighteen twenty-four. We're actually at thirteen thirty-six, thirty-two thirty-six because we're asking for that, um, seven hundred, um, square feet over. So that's what we're asking. So we're asking for floor area. So what we're at, we're asking is
What's that number in the bottom right?
Thirty-two thousand, thirty-two hundred, uh, thirty-six. What, yeah. Yeah, no, sorry. Everything else height-wise, the tower complies, everything else complies as well, and then obviously setbacks comply as well.
Yeah, and that thirty-two fifty-six.
Thirty-two thirty-six.
Thirty-six is seven hundred fifty-six.
Over the two forty-eight.
And that just happens with the size of
Well, if you go, if you scroll, if you scroll, if you scroll over.
Moving the garage. Moving the garage is what's causing
Again, I have, I have areas that are, that are actually included, that's allowed. I can close in these areas right here without variance.
Yes, that kind of use included.
That is, that's included in the, what I'm, what I'm allowed. Including the hundred and twelve is what I'm allowed. So just enclose the rest of the downstairs, looking at seven fifty-six over. Well, and the, so then it goes into the other aspect as well, um, is I can't finish it. I can't have electrical down there. I can't have heaters on the floor. Even in the, even in the, um, cam application says the water line for an outdoor shower can't be, and it's so, it's in the end, it's, it almost, it's doesn't really make sense, right? I can't, you can't finish it. You can't do anything down here. You can't put finished floor and appliances, anything like that. But I can't close it in by, because it counts as floor area. But I can't, by FEMA and building code regulations, I can't do any of that. So all we're trying to do is close in, make breakaway walls. That way at least they can secure everything and lock everything up.
The, the basement cellar distinction, just so you know, really applies to the whole first floor. The garage, an area counting as garage counts for floor area. But because you've raised this area here, here, Travis is saying, we have enough floor area to go to include these. But we don't have enough to include these and it's because these have to be counted because of the height of the house. These areas. So a combination of that basement cellar issue plus moving the garage out from a detached, non-conforming structure underneath. It, it's a combination of those reasons why the floor area variance is needed. And I, I, I have highlighted version of, of this, these, uh, the, the proposed house, um, the, the front setback on the, on the north. That, that's a, a non-conformity that's being taken, uh, that being eliminated. Uh, the rear setback on the east, the front setback on the west. Uh, the, the open porch setback, uh, the coverage and the one that's not shown on here is the location of the detached garage being in the front yard, which is just prohibited under the accessory building, uh, regulation. So it doesn't show up on the bulk zoning table, but it is a non-conformity that is being eliminated based on the proposal.
I want to understand the breakaway walls. Does that work? So it's really just, um, the way the framing gets attached to the concrete, there are screws that go into the concrete, um, pilot peers that have attention strength and that they actually just snap. So actually they'll just fall in. That way it's not putting any pressure on the appears. The concrete appears won't break. It's really just these panels that have screws that are attached to those.
And then if you didn't put those two walls or three walls there, you would be an open garage and that would be
Oh, we could, the aspect is we can still last. We can put lattice, that way water can free flow and everything like that. We just can't.
And then we wouldn't count.
It wouldn't count. So it's good, it's, it's semi enclosed with lattice. Or we can really actually fully. But in the end, the construction actually is still the same. We'll still have the breakaway panels, um, and still have the breakaway screws.
Yeah, so I think you already answered this to some extent, but I just wanna be involved on this. So like in, in the section of Mr. Amakeen's, uh, uh, report about how the site satisfies the, the traditional hardship requirement. It says, um, like, like one of the reasons is that it's a, a corner lot has two front yards equal to thirty foot setback. But I was wondering initially was you're asking for a variance for a setback, you're asking for a square footage increase. So I was just wondering like how does to connect? But I think you are more accurate.
I, 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 I would answer that by saying that the corner lot and the two rear and front yards limits your building envelope significantly, more so than a regular lot. Um, combined with the fact that the lot is, is non-conforming in terms of size to begin with. So you have, you have a condensed area to put building. Which means that you're, you're, you're sort of squeezing everything together and having to raise for FEMA. And because you've got to recognize that floor area on the bottom floor by raising, that's what's triggering the need. Also, taking a detached garage, which is non-conforming and including it within the structure, within all the setback lines. Those two factors are driving the need for the variance of floor area. And I, I searched my, just my own files for, for variances similar to this. I mentioned Oak Avenue one where, um, the board did approve, um, additional floor area as a variance. Um, I did one on one twenty-seven Island Avenue, um, which was a similar situation. And, and the, uh, the floor area variance was granted on that one as well. But, um, I, I do think that FEMA requirements, breakaway construction and the two front and two rear yard setbacks. Together with a, a detached building and structure, both of which don't satisfy the zoning regulations. I do think that that satisfies the traditional hardship because I, I can't think of a site where that has occurred. But I, I could be wrong, but I just don't know that that's a usual occurrence.
Okay. I'm also.
No.
I have a question too. If anybody knows, I mean, it is the buildable based upon the size of the lot or the size of the buildable.
So
The floor area?
You have a hundred by hundred slot and it's twenty by twenty, then you basically have a sixty by sixty square, right? But if it's a thirty by thirty on two sides, you have a much smaller square. Is the building calculation based upon the lot size or based upon the buildable size?
At the, the floor area and coverage are based on lot size, yeah, which again is non-conforming. So, yeah, you know, the table with all the confusing numbers in it, that, that's what drives both coverage and floor area. So
Makes perfect sense.
Yeah. I did, um, wanna make note, there are a number of, of letters in support of the application, which I, um, I don't know that we need to read them. I'm sure you saw them. I think they've been made part of the file.
Yeah, they're part of the, yeah.
Glad you know that. It's worth mentioning.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know, you know, people from the public.
So anybody, um, in the audience wish to speak in favor or have any questions?
Yes. Um, Cecilia Pistor, seventy-three Middle Beach West. I'm a budding neighbor with them. And, and I, I think it's a good design. I think we have no objection to it. I think it's an attractive design too. Credit to the architect that it fits the style of the area, the tradition of, of the the beach properties and that as well, what was traditional. Um, and someone just wanted to, I, I agree, but I do have one question about the retaining walls and the grade. Is that gonna, uh, where's that gonna send flood or excess rainwater? Is that gonna? Or is that not your?
If they wanna address it.
Yeah, and we can answer that. So no drainage patterns are changing, which means that the water is going where the water is going now. So after it's
So it's not raised or
Nope, it's only raised for the septic based on the public health code. That's why it's out of the ground and the walls are basically to hold the soil back.
Right.
Okay, so the grading patterns, the way it's graded out now is the same that it's gonna be graded out in the future. So no additional water will be going on your property. And honestly with
Actually, they get more water than we do.
Yeah, and honestly with the, uh, reduced in previous area on the lot, there's gonna be actually less water coming off than comes off.
Oh, sure. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody in the audience, uh?
No. There is, but nobody's raising a hand.
Um, okay, any final comments from the applicant or?
I don't have any other comments. I don't know if anyone.
Just a quick comment, Bob DeSavido, uh, eighty-seven West Wharf. And I know this has brought up the security purposes and the reason to enclose. Which we think is, is important. There's a ton of traffic, foot traffic in that area. There's parades, there's a lot of weddings at that hotel. You know, partygoers are walking around. There is the, uh, grassy strip concerts, there is the fireworks. And so the, the security is very important to us and that's a big reason for wanting to enclose that lower level. Whereas Travis pointed out, you know, the alternative, we could lattice, but we just don't, you know.
Cars aren't safe.
Right, but that's another concern. Great.
Yes, I was just gonna, um, I'm Margaret Smith, sixty-five Middle Beach Road West. And I just wanted to echo everything that Cecilia said. Um, I think it's great design. I think it's aesthetically pleasing to the community. And I think it will vastly improve that, that office property.
Anybody else? Anybody in the audience, any final? Okay, have anything else, final questions? Anybody, I'd like to motion, we move to, um, close the public portion of the hearing, move to deliberations. All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
I'll start. I would be in favor of approving the application. One, we're eliminating the six non-conformity. And also, uh, it's a unique hardship. The lot area square, uh, square footage is non-conforming, but also it being a corner lot with two front yards and two side yards. So I think, uh, with the reduction of the six non-conformities and again, the unique hardship. I would be in favor of approving the application.
I, I agree with that. I think that, um, substantial reductions uh, is, is, um, compelling. I would think that we would have, we might have to say, well, no, just go with the lattice work and then we don't have. But I think the argument bottom
Is that a
The sound made about the security provided by the solid walls is, um, is also, they are sacrificing the margins. This process of the used area, um, for a replacement of cars and other items down there is, uh, it's protected. And so I think that's a, that's a hardship in itself if we've lost the name of securities and that plus substantial reduction on this, um, recording.
It's I agree with what, uh, Phil and, um, definitely do, they can be, it's getting all definitions, but it was like the si- significant reduction of non-conformities. Also that it, it does have a traditional market on it. I do think that is two front yards. The front yard setbacks, the factors unlocated, the, uh, the law zone severely limits the kind of structure that you can build. And so I think it's, uh, I think it's some variance we, is a very fair and advice for it.
Steve?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that when we, whatever proposal we put together includes the cover, the increase in coverage is a result of FEMA requirements to raise the property. Not because they just want to have thirty percent of our stakes. So I don't want somebody coming from on some frozen ones, gave thirty percent. It resulted in thirty percent more specific to regulations, FEMA having to raise that house. If that's
So I, I agree with everything you've all said. And yeah, I, to Steve's point. I wish the zoning board would take this up, that people raise their properties and create more more, um, coverage, but anyway, that doesn't matter. So I don't have anything to add. I'd be in favor of approving.
Then I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, application point four dash ten, the seven version of West Wharf building. Um, for variance, request of three point eight C from about three thousand two hundred and thirty-six square feet for area. Where two thousand four hundred and forty-eight square feet is required. The, based on the fact that they are making a substantial reduction in, um, six, other non-conformities that are eliminating, not, not production, but eliminating six other non-conformities. And the purpose of raising the, uh, the, the house was to meet FEMA requirements, which added the square footage area. And but the solid walls are required as opposed to lattice for security purposes.
Yeah, I'd like to amend that the variant.
Um, further that the variance, uh, we, we require that the variance, uh, is, is, uh, set. It requires that it's based on the plans as submitted and that all construction must have gone through those plans.
Go to the second then.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm gonna do this assignment. I think it's gonna review it all. So I just, yeah, do you wanna?
I'd like to make motion to approve the site plan for four dash ten, eighty-seven West Wharf. Submitted. The second plan is consistent with the goals and policies of the council management.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
It's good minutes, right? We need to do minutes, right?
Thank you, thank you.
I would like to make a motion. Minutes from the what was the date? From the May fourteenth meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Say second.
I said second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night.